At the great notice of this meeting, the zoning board and the president was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and the Costa Star, our official newspapers, and posted on the golden door of the municipal building. You're pro Paul, Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Almena?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Dioria?
Here.
Mr. Rizal?
Yes.
Mr. Sener?
Here.
Okay, we're ready to get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Well, you do have to put your hand over your heart for the pledge, but you don't have to do it before you start spouting the back. Ask him what he's great and we got in trouble for not having this yet, that's all right.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Act Number 24 meeting?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Mr. Ross?
I'm standing.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Almena?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Dioria?
Standing.
The first resolution is for Keith Turgeon for 211 Third Avenue.
Okay, so Kevin tells me he goes through the resolutions already, so if you have a question, ask me.
He just does a quick summary.
A quick summary.
And the...
All right, so he basically highlighted for me as Kevin would do. Use variance approval for the extension of a previously non-performing use by allowing the installation of a pool on a lot containing more than one residential structure. And the special conditions, which he also highlighted for me. We want confirmation that the grass lawn area will be maintained on the site per the testimony presented. Confirmation that the post fence will enclose the entire property. Confirmation that the numerous replacement pavers will be utilized in conjunction with the testimony presented. And then, let's see, he also has a check for record keeping purposes and has a very extensively discussed on the record at the public hearing. The board herein is not legitimizing the existing garage cottage. Rather, per the armed record discussion, the status of the said existing garage cottage remains unchanged as a result of the pending approval. And I believe those are the only special conditions.
Do you have a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Almena?
No.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is for the application of Lisa and John Cronin to 1501 C Street.
Yes, so Mr. Chairman, I understand there's an issue with this application in that there was an issue with impervious coverage during the force of the hearing? Where you were told there was no such variance, but subsequent to that, the applicant said, no, but there is a variance as necessary? That's what I understand.
The objection was recognized.
Yes, and so am I representing that correctly?
Yes.
So, it's Kevin's recommendation and I agree with him that it wouldn't be appropriate to adopt this resolution tonight because things are going to change. And it's really up to the applicant to determine whether they're going to renotice and come back to reopen the hearing. To put on their proofs for the extra variance that they're asking for. Or to figure out if they could possibly do it without having to change the resolution, in which case theoretically the resolution could be adopted, but I don't know how we could do that. So, but I can't, but I would not recommend adopting the resolution this evening.
Okay, so, let me just, for the folks that weren't here and just application. In the last meeting, we seemed inclined to approve that application and we went to a vote, however, the vote is contingent because we had some questions about the square footage. Or the total lot coverage, total building coverage calculations, we seem to be all over the place with that. And I want, I would like to remind everybody, you know, board members included, that you're testifying as to the accuracy of the information that's being provided to us. We can only go by the truth of your work. Appreciate the fact that you guys indicated, you know, lack of confidence in those numbers, but had we had that confidence and went forward, we would have been approving the variance that had incorrect information on it. So, you know, to try to help, we went forward with that. I think in the future, we really should not get to a vote unless we know for sure that the numbers are accurate. Because we voted with inaccurate numbers and it turns out there's, it appears to be that there's going to be two additional variances, one for lot coverage and one for building coverage. And that possibly could have had an effect on board members' votes had they known that prior to making the vote. So with that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to speak for Kevin, but I believe Kevin recommended that renotice be done.
You would have to. So one of two things is going to happen. Either they can build the application without those two variances, in which case it would be okay. But I don't think that's possible.
The board... Did we confirm that? That being in compliance with lot coverage and building coverage is feasible?
We're being told by the applicants that...
Yeah, goodness.
To just state the state of the matter.
Joseph Kishuba, KBA Engineering Services, Madison. I am a professional on the application.
And you're still under oath?
Still under oath. As recall, the plan that was submitted was a plan not prepared by my office. Once we did actually calculate, we found that there is a building covered variance and the impervious covered variance is larger than we had indicated from the calculations. I cannot eliminate both of them without substantial impact to... What's that? Oh, I cannot, you know, eliminate both without substantial impact to the site, especially the building covered variance, which was not, you know, on the application, so.
So basically, there's no way they can see on this resolution, so it's improper to adopt this resolution. And what is probably going to happen, although I leave it to the applicant, is the applicant's going to have to renotice to reopen the hearing to make those proofs on those variances. They theoretically don't need to start from ground zero, they don't start from the beginning if the board doesn't want them to, because you've already heard the application. But they need to at least put the proofs on that they can get, that they're entitled to those two variances without any detriments. But that's going to be an upon full notice.
I think upon coming back, we'll have a discussion as to the level of additional detail that we might need to recover. We might have a different composition of the board or air to who was here last month.
Fair enough.
You know, that alone could change things.
Clearly, if they're new board members that didn't hear the original application, then they...
Well, I mean, I know they could go listen to it, but...
No, no, no.
But in context of what we have going on, I think a recap of the project and the changes that are submitted, as well as the, any other adjustments that are made, numbers that are provided. You know, we have to have an opportunity to go through that again and then revote. Just because we approved it under the previous presumptions doesn't necessarily mean any board member is going to be tied to voting the same way that they did the prior time, given the fact that there's two additional variances being requested here.
I agree.
Okay, so with all that said, I think it's just a matter of, you know, renoticing and getting back on the docket and coming back and, you know, hopefully we can do it in short, not an extended period of time, but we do have to, you know, cover that ground, so for the sake of the board members that aren't here. Absolutely, and we certainly understand that. I fully anticipate I'll be providing my testimony again based upon the new numbers and the proper justifications for it.
Okay, great.
Okay, so...
Oh, I'm so embarrassed, I'm still under oath.
Just to clarify a few things, because our client here scratched his head. So, they bought the house...
Still under oath, right?
Yep. They bought the house from the person that built it for. Got the CO, had all the coverage. The person they bought it from put that back patio in. They put the shed in and they put the shed on the side of the house along with the AstroTurf. That's how he bought it, so he's not thinking anything other than he wants to add a sunroom in the back and Joe will open it particularly. I believe Tony was the one that picked up on it correctly, so the numbers on the architect that the owner hired, Mr. Felton, the surveyor couldn't get to it. So, Mr. Felton did all those coverages. That's all that Joe spoke about last meeting. And then a couple guys still bought the unit, picked up on it. So, with that said, there's nothing we can get established from last meeting. You understand? It's not Joe's fault, it's not the owner's fault.
No, to be clear...
So, that's the house they bought. Jim, if I could say, I just want to be clear and, you know, this is meant for a lot of people that aren't in this room right now. Whether it's an honest mistake, which this apparently is, okay, or it's an intentional misrepresentation, it doesn't matter to us as a board, it's wrong, right? How it got wrong and why it got wrong, the only thing that matters is when we have licensed professionals coming in front of us and presenting numbers as if they're accurate, we have to take the word for it. If they're not being truthful with us, or it's an honest error, they still run the risk of losing their license if it gets reported as, you know, if it's off, if it's diminutive, who cares? But if it's, in this case, if it's a significant enough... Move away from the numbers to trigger two additional variances. Understood. That's a bigger deal, right? So, I think renotice is in order, you know, no harm, no foul, come back, but had the original application gone out with those two variances requested, you know, we could have had a different outcome. Yeah, so my point behind all this, not to throw an architect under the bus, is that the architect put the wrong numbers in that Joe read. So, that's why you guys picked up on it was correctly. So, in talking, this is just talk, but in talking to Mr. Cronin here, he's going to move forward with replacing the impervious pavers with pervious pavers to get a credit, to give a credit back towards the coverage. The turf that was put in is pervious, which Joe can testify to.
I want to write that down, we go out of document.
And so we basically want to leave what's there, except switch out the papers.
Right, but you're, but we're not doing that tonight.
No, I'm just explaining how we got to this point.
But my point is, I don't think it's necessary this evening.
I think that right now, we're just deciding to table this, not going to approve the resolution tonight, request it to be renoticed, and you get scheduled to return with being prepared to do a full application as you did last time. It may not take as long as it did, it wasn't that long. We're just explaining how this forum... Right, okay, so with that, I would like to make a motion to turn down or table...
Do not turn it down, you're just tabling that resolution.
Okay, we'll table a resolution for tonight. I don't know if we need to vote on table here or not, I would assume that...
I have no problem with a motion and a vote.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table the approval of the resolution for Lisa and John Cronin to... Actually, it's...
It's indefinite until I vote.
The resolution is actually inaccurate now anyway, so we're just going to table it until it gets modified pending a rehearing of the application at a future date.
Correct.
Okay?
Is the board able to identify a future date now? Considering that documentation is already ready?
We know who's in charge of that.
January 30th.
So, if we can just get a second on that motion, then you can just do it all.
Second, okay.
On November...
All right, we have new copies or...
We did submit new copies.
Those are the ones that were given to us right now. Yeah, so they are correct. Great, all right, thank you guys.
The only additional information we'll submit is I'll do it later on the AstroTurf, so it's on record.
That's equivalent to...
It's equivalent to impervious coverage.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Yep. All right, thanks, folks.
So, the next resolution is for Librado DeSalle, 1017 16th Avenue.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, this was all variance approval associated with a request concerning the number of persons from existing single family homes. The, let's see, we had specifically to propose improvements to the quality construction of an addition to the once lawfully existing single family home on the site. The enclosure of a covered patio at the site, the destruction of pervious open deck at the site, and modifications to the existing shed at the site. And the conditions, let's see, with regard to the amended application, the question will be, the board notes the following, these aren't conditions yet. Initially, per the applicant submitted, the applicant was under the belief that the site contained a front dwelling and a rear dwelling unit, a cottage. The subject plans even reference the rear structure of the guest house. The boroughs R-50 zoning regulations do not permit two dwelling units relocated or locked. The applicant's representatives' plans initially suggested that the two dwelling units of the site consisted of a pre-existing non-performing use constituted for pre-existing non-performing use. As such, based upon the initially submitted plans, the zoning officer issued a zoning denial letter suggesting that the proposals constructed in addition to the front dwelling unit constituted an expansion of a pre-existing non-performing use. The applicant's representatives publicly noticed for such a use, the variance for the expansion of a non-performing use, the applicant representative also publicly noticed for the bulked variance we need as well. During the public hearing process, testimony was presented in reference to the existing back structure. Specifically, there was testimony suggesting that there was no air conditioning service in the rear structure and no heating service in the back structure. Additionally, the testimony indicated that the so-called rear dwelling had never been, had never really been occupied or otherwise utilized as a living space, rather the testimony indicated that the applicant's grandmother would occasionally only use the rear structure for cooking purposes. During the public hearing process, the board members were ultimately advised that municipal records and the tax records showed that the rear structure was not assessed, was assessed not as a dwelling unit, but rather only as a shed. That is, municipal records did not reflect that the rear structure with the guest house as reflected on the initially submitted plans and the initial testimony. Rather, at reference, municipal records suggested that the back structure was only a shed. The issue was a concern for the board members. Clearly, the board members did not want to recognize or otherwise legitimize the pre-existing non-performing use with regards to the rear structure, if there was no legal basis requirement for doing so. The board members recognized that the designation of a pre-existing non-performing use is significantly, is a significant property right, which is etched only be designated with lawful pre-existing non-performing use status when there is legitimacy for doing so. Respectfully based upon the information reviewed by the zoning board members, there was no basis provided that the rear structure constituted a pre-existing non-performing dwelling use. So, those are the facts. And then the conditions, I forget some of them, there are a lot, okay. Confirmation, the special conditions are that confirmation that there shall only be one single family dwelling on the site. Confirmation that the rear structure shall not be utilized as a dwelling unit, or rather the same will only be utilized as a shed storage area. Confirmation that the plans shall be modified to be consistent with the testimony and information presented during the public hearing and consistent with the terms of the within resolution. Confirmation that the building coverage of the site shall be corrected, reduced to 38.38 percent. Confirmation that there shall be no plumbing associated within the rear structure of shed. Confirmation that the kitchen shall be removed from the existing rear structure, which will be converted to a shed. Confirmation that the bathrooms shall be removed, eliminated from the rear structure, which shall be converted to a shed. Confirmation that the existing flooring shall be removed from the rear structure, which shall be converted to a shed. Confirmation that the existing rear structure at the site shed shall be repurposed as a shed storage area. Confirmation that higher stripes with pervious material between the same shall be installed slightly for the driveway to the, to be repurposed shed. Confirmation that the impervious coverage shall be reduced to 65.57 percent. Confirmation that the materials for the rear structure to be converted to a shed shall aesthetically match, complement the existing single family home at the site in terms of materials, color, style, et cetera. And inclusion of outdoor shower details associated with the rear structure to be converted to a shed if the applicant's so desired and further provided outstanding files and prevailing municipal zoning regulations. We then have some more. Let's see. Confirmation that the renovated front structure will ultimately look like, resemble the illustrated rendering, margin to evidence in Exhibit 88. Confirmation that the to be repurposed shed shall be redesigned to match, complement the renovated front, single family home. Confirmation that the new deck approved herein shall not be covered and closed absent further formal approval of the Delmar zoning board adjustment. Confirmation that the site shall contain a minimum of two compliant nine feet by 20 feet parking spaces on the site. And confirmation that there will just be no separate utilities for the to be repurposed shed. They also shall perpetually abandon any potential pre-existing non-performing rights associated with the rear structure. And I think that's it as far as special conditions. Yes, it is. Thank you, Ms. Galaski. You're welcome.
You all have a copy of the revised drawings that show the calculations matched, what's in the resolution now? Have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Almena?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Okay.
One more resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's establishing the 2025 meeting.
Like you say, I didn't... You sent that out there, didn't you?
Yes.
And I guess you're just looking...
Do you have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. April, if you don't mind, I don't know if all board members are aware, but we have four scheduled for tonight, but three of the four are actually happy to be scheduled. Could you tell us what the new dates are, please?
Yeah, so the applications for 10312th Avenue and 50312th Avenue were never noticed. So, those are, we're not carrying them or anything, we're just postponing them until they notice for a meeting day.
So, that's a TBD, they're both TBD then, in terms of dates, two and four?
10312th and 50312th. 50813th Avenue. The homeowner is going to obtain an attorney to help him with his application, so he requested to carry his application to the January 30th meeting without the need to renotice. And he agreed to extend the timeframe.
Okay.
So, I just need a motion to carry the application of Ken and Annabelle Thorne for 50813th Avenue to January 30th.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it. Okay, so...
All in favor?
I'm...
So, this one is January 30th?
So, as a general announcement, I know no one's probably, maybe there are people here. So, Ken and Annabelle Thorne at 50813th Avenue, that application's not being heard tonight, it's going to be heard on January 30th at 6:00 P.M. You're not going to receive any further notice, so if you want to be part of the application, you need to be in this room at that time. Okay? Thank you.
Just some general housekeeping for me, we have a set of plans here with Mr. Peterson, we also have some plans provided for...
Yeah, what is for the two, they're for the two resolutions that we just talked about.
Right.
One's for 1501C and one is for 101716.
And Mr. Albert's, the thing we're here to do?
There's, the cover letter and the two plans that say are for 1017, and then 1501C, sure, he was just a single document.
And 1017 is completed, right? You just put that through.
Right, that's where the document's just clarifying the numbers that were written.
50813.
So, yeah, so I have 10312th and 50312th, I'd already given you guys in your packets before I found out that they weren't noticed.
Right.
So, just hold on to them until they get added back to the agenda.
Don't get rid of anything.
So, we only have one application tonight.
Question. We just approved the dates, but November has two different options.
Oh, yeah, you guys are supposed to...
We're supposed to talk about the...
Second meeting.
Yeah, right.
So, what is...
Mr. Albert, 1501C is you, right? Mr. Albert? Yeah, that's Joe's plan.
Did anyone have a preference on the 13th or the 20th? I know either one will probably work for Kevin, but if the board has a preference. For November or next year.
Whatever's good for you, April, probably is good for you.
Whatever's worse for you.
All right.
I got a quarter if you want. 13th is good with me, if you want to...
All right, we'll do the 13th, if that works.
And then this way, if we ever, as the year goes on, if we need to put back, pull back dates...
We can always change it later.
20th, right. All right, looks like we're ready to hear this first, this first and only application, 1234 Briar Road. Do I take it for, or do I jump in down here?
That's it.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, Mr. Kennedy, did, if you notice, the shots also be in order and the board definitely is in the business of this topic. And let me swear in, zoning officer, the testimony. Sir, do you swear that's what you're about to give this evening will be the truth of all due, let me hear something about it? Thank you very much. And if I can mark into evidence for following exhibit. Exhibit A1 will be the new application package dated August 8/12, sorry, August 12/24. Exhibit A2 will be the application checklist. Exhibit A3 will be the minor land use zoning permit dated, there's two names, 4/24/24 and 6/4/24. Exhibit A4 is the minor land use denial form dated 6/4/24. Exhibit A5 are the architectural floor plans. An elevation is dated 8/2/24 and access to three sheets. Sheet one is dated 8/2/24, sheet two, it was revised, it was also dated 8/2/24, but was revised on, I guess it's 9/24/24? I don't, I don't have the... Because if it happened, what the, what sheet two is revised as a... Or maybe, maybe they were originally dated 4/24/24 and revised 8/2/24? And then sheet three is, is 8/2/24?
4/24/24 and then...
That's the original date for the revision is 8/2/24? Okay, that, that's what it is, so, so it was originally dated 4/24/24 and then it was revised 8/2/24? And that's all I have for exhibits and I, I can swear in the applicant and their architecture. You do them all at once, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Do you both swear in testimony you're going to give this evening will be the truth of all due, let me hear the truth?
I do.
I do.
And just state your names for the record?
Mark Adler.
Paul Manuel Chenko.
And just by last name, sir? And you're a licensed architect, state of New Jersey?
Yes, sir.
And you're licensed in good standing at this time?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And, and sir, you're the owner of the property, correct?
I am.
Okay. And how long have you owned the property?
A little over, actually, about four years, I guess, at this moment.
Four years? And there's an existing, there's an existing single family home at the site?
Yep.
How do you live there?
I do.
And at this time, you're proposing an addition?
Uh, yes.
And can you please explain or have your architect explain what's happening you're doing?
Mr. Albert, can you explain the reason for growing family?
Yeah, so we're looking to extend the back. My wife and I both work from home. We currently have one kid and a dog, and we have a baby on the way. So, we love the house and we love the area, we take walks every day, we love Delmar. But the main reason why we're looking to extend is, since we both work from home, we need another office space. And we would be extending to the second floor for an office space off of our bedroom, off our primary, so... It's so we can live here the rest of our lives with no issues.
Is that it for your presentation in terms of why you feel you need this expansion?
Well, it's more the space, having a family. There's definitely more to build off that, but, I mean, we love Delmar so much, we don't ever want to leave.
Please, my questions are to try to help you, so don't take it the wrong way. Typically, somebody would come here with an attorney, right?
A lenient attorney.
And lenient attorney would assist in providing hardship or reasons why you need these variances, so I, I hear that you have a growing family. You're working from home, which wasn't the case maybe when you were returning from work at home. So, you need additional space, not only for the family, but to use it as workspace, given the change of the working conditions, right?
Correct.
Okay, so those would be pretty much, do you have any other hardships that you, you have to cite in terms of the current issues you might have with the home, the property, the layout? That would use as part of more justification for granting variances?
Well, it's really the other part, the family aspect. The first four is, you know, allow the kids to play more. Right now, it's very expensive.
Growing family, that's right. Okay, all right, all right, great, thank you.
We do have an oversized lot, Mr. Chairman, that's your question regarding...
Okay, what are the current lot dimensions, item 24, is that right?
The requirement is 5,000 square foot lot in the, in the R-50 zone, we have 3755, it's a 40-foot frontage instead of 50. So, obviously, we have, we have that pre-existing position.
So, you're, you're approximating 40 by 90, 96 is the lot then?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, so that would be an additional hardship perhaps that is requiring you to trigger these variances, because if it were, potentially, if it were 50 by 100-foot lot, you, either they'd be much more in compliance or fully in compliance. Okay, thanks, thank you, Mr. Almchekko, bring it up.
Okay. I have, I have a revision in my calculations because I... I, I have, I have a, a revision in my calculations because I, just I couldn't read my own handwriting. But, uh, a lot coverage fifty-five percent is required. Existing fifty percent, uh, are, are new lot covers that we're proposing is fifty-one point nine three percent instead of forty-one percent. I apologize for the misnomer, but we're still.
Can you point us to where in the documentation, uh, that the modifications you made, please? So we, we could all make it especially, um, that.
It's under the zoning intervention table.
Okay, so Mr. Lex, he's got an error on the submission that he's suggesting that we had it at this time. So we gotta make note of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to get all the, do you got it? We have it.
Okay, so what, point me to it, what number's changing?
It's under the, under the zoning information. The number, instead of forty-one point nine three, it'll be fifty-one point nine three percent.
And that's the, um, which coverage is that?
The building coverage. Lot coverage, yes.
Is it impervious or building lot?
Uh, that's impervious.
Impervious coverage, okay.
Yeah, we're reducing the size of an existing patio, uh, in, in the rear. Uh, the front, the front walkway that we're adding is going through impervious pavers.
But if, if these files are required, it's still within, it's not, you're not requesting variance, you're just, you're just correcting a number, okay?
But, yes.
Okay, so there's no variance associated with that, that, so that's good, okay.
Is the fifty percent credit in those calculations?
I'm sorry, sir?
You, you said you're doing impervious pavers, so you get a fifty percent credit?
Yes.
But these look like the gross numbers without any credit for impervious pavers.
I, I calculated based on impervious pavers, the, uh, the, the new walkway.
Right, so the, you have, so the fifty-six, the, the actual area is a hundred and twelve. You took the credit out of the hundred, hundred and twelve, is that what you did?
Correct, yes, I reduced the size of the existing impervious paper patio.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that we know where the credit was for the impervious pavers.
Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you understand, right?
So we're proposing a twelve-foot by eighteen-foot addition to the rear of the home.
And sir, let's just mark that in, it doesn't, you, you've written on it. Alright, so that we did it, A six.
A one?
And, and just, it's A six. And just tell us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And just tell us, uh, what is this? This is a, this is a, you've drawn over, it's a, a plan that's already in their possession, correct?
That's correct. We've colored in the existing site plan indicating for the board's, um, approval. The addition to the rear and also a forefront addition to the front porch. Currently, the existing front porch is six feet wide. We want to add four feet, we're still within the front yard setback. But it would provide a little bit of extra legroom for if family comes over or they could sit in the front yard on the porch.
And, and that addition out the front is not triggering any, uh, any variance?
No, sir.
Okay.
And sir, can you just write A six on there so that we can, and?
Sure.
So just to keep us all together on the same page literally here. It appears that, um, of the four variances being requested, um, there's no change to pre-existing for three of that. For the lot size, the frontage and the lot shape. And the only variance that you're requesting tonight is the rear yard setback, which, uh, the existing is thirty-seven point three six, which is in compliance because thirty-five is required and you're proposing.
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
So, uh, approximately twelve feet, um, uh, going into the rear yard setback.
Okay.
That's correct.
The extension on the, where's this gonna trigger variance on your?
Uh, no.
Okay, Mr. Almachenko, if we, if we focus on that, um, on that rear yard setback, um, variance that you asked before, that would, let's get through this relatively easily.
The, the other, if you wanna call it a hardship, but basically the configuration of the lot is that it, it does slope, it's on an angle in the rear, in the rear yard. Uh, we're actually at twenty-six feet if we took the longer dimension, but the shorter dimension is what we took and that's twenty-three point twenty-three, uh, from, from the rear yard line. The, the addition that we're proposing.
And we already have these in the plans, correct? This is not a new exhibit?
You did.
Thank you.
I just shaded in the partitions here indicating, uh, the, the addition on the first floor, which will be an extension of the living area and play area for the kids. Uh, we're, we have a set of stairs, uh, which is currently existing coming out of the rear, we're gonna keep those. We have a pass-through over here for barbecue area. And on the second level, as Mr. Adler had pointed out, we're gonna take part of this area of the bedroom, of the extended master bedroom and create an office built for them, uh, to work at home. There's no, there's no third floor, there's no attic, well, there's the existing attic, but there's totally storage. Uh, we're not proposing a living area on the third level of all. And then this indicates a front porch extension, which is one-story with a, a simple roof, a little hip roof over for shelter. It's really our presentation.
Alright, we're done with the presentation. So with that, I'm gonna open it up for board questions. We'll start with our friend on the west side over here, Dan.
Quick question, Paul. The, the garage is already there, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just, that was one question. And then, this is just a bookkeeping thing. You have the height of the house is, is twenty-eight, but in the land use form, you have thirty-four point eight five. So I, I just always look at consistencies and inconsistencies.
Yeah, I, I, I corrected. Ordinarily, we put that in that we will retain the thirty-five-foot height no matter what we do. I usually do that when we do our preliminary submissions, but then looking back, there's no reason to increase the height of the roof, uh, in any way. And the, the existing house, as you say, is twenty-eight.
It is twenty-eight.
Yes.
Uh, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neil?
No question.
No questions? Mr. Neil, is this property in the flood zone?
No, sir.
No?
No.
And then, I, I'm just clarification, uh, Paul, are, are we, your floor area ratio at pre-existing is sixty point eight, or this is for me, for clarification? There's no attic space, correct?
No, sir, no.
I'm good.
No questions? I have no questions.
I have no questions?
No questions.
Okay, and, uh, what's the access to the, how you get to the attic? What's the, um, the method of access to the attic space?
Pull down the door. Uh, put it right now?
Yeah.
It's like, uh.
Well, what's it, is that, if it's right now, is that the way, what are you, what are you planning to have?
Uh, I think the same thing we have on the third floor, it's just a little access, no stairs, nothing. It's just for the, the air club.
Okay, so, so worst-case scenario, we do pull-down staircase to the attic?
Yeah, that's needed.
If we can just make note of that.
Like, he's not even, you're not, you're not proposing that, though.
No, we're not proposing.
All, all he has down is a hatch.
I'm just trying to make some reference to the fact that there won't be a fixed staircase going up to the attic.
Right, so you don't wanna put down that, he's gonna add a pull-down staircase. He's not, he's not proposing.
The material, the only reason I mentioned that was just so there's no plan that we don't know about that there'll be a fixed, uh, staircase, so.
Okay, so, so, so we'll know that there is.
We don't wanna, you know, find, build.
No, no.
Having a staircase going up to the attic.
Right.
Okay.
Any appliances up there, Paul?
No, sir.
No heat, no A, you see?
Are you talking about current here or the future?
In the attic.
Current today?
Yes, there's no, no appliances or anything.
Well, there is an HVAC unit in the third floor.
No, no, he's talking about appliances.
Kitchen.
Do you mean HVAC?
Sorry, it's not like that.
He has access to that.
Right.
And it has to be a twenty-two by thirty-inch opening to get in to the attic.
Okay.
So he's gonna need a pull-down staircase to get up.
Well, sorry, in the existing building today on the third floor, there is an HVAC unit, which is those dimensions.
Can we start over? The pre-existing structure as it is now is three stories, two and a half stories.
Correct. Uh, three stories and an attic. You're not, you're not changing the attic at all?
No, sorry.
Recognize that, he's saying the existing house is three and the elevation on the other one is not, right? It's two and a half.
It's currently a two and a half story house, there's no living area on the third floor.
Correct.
That's all.
So it's an attic, so it's a two-story house.
Two-story house.
Two-story with an attic, right? Is it finished on your third floor?
Yes, that's what I understand your definition of.
Yeah, so it's a two and a half story house, you have the first floor, you have the second floor, then you have the third floor, which is.
An attic, an attic, sweet.
Above that, so you have three floors, which we're fine as two and a half. Your addition is going to be two stories with an attic.
It's where my office is. I don't know whether or not.
Thank you. If it's not on the plans, anyway, okay. But that's okay.
Well, it's, it's, let's just.
That, therefore, we know. Do you have a board member that has a question? So, so please, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just kind of the plans, I'm seeing, I'm seeing the two-story house, where's the third story in, in these plans?
Well, but yeah, but.
Yes, we're perfect.
Apparently, Mr. Almachenko, as I thought, just that he was not aware. Half the size of the house. And that's a very.
Story jump. Yeah, but that's, it goes back to my question on how we got four area ratio sixty, right?
I think you're, I, I think you're on the problem.
Where, but then there's full bathroom.
You only thought out what you had planned, it was habitable.
And he said it is.
Right.
It is habitable. The, the third, the third, the third floor is finished, it's habitable.
Yeah, there's a, a full bathroom, there's an office.
So, so here's what's gonna happen, uh, from a legal perspective tonight. This board can't vote on this application tonight because the plans don't accurately depict what the house looks like right now.
I wasn't aware of the third floor.
Right, and that, that, that's, that's the problem. So, we're not blaming you, but, uh, but there obviously, there's obviously an issue and calculations are going to change based upon the fact that there's more living space than, than, you know, this is nobody's fault. There obviously was some type of miscommunication, but this board cannot vote on this application tonight. You're gonna have to revise your, revise your architecture, we submit them to be, there might be another variance that comes up, we don't know, so.
But I think he has it, just for matter of record, Paul, is I think you, I think you have a floor area ratio determination already at sixty point eight, which must have captured a portion of that existing third floor at some point.
It didn't, no.
He's being honest.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of the third floor.
It's, uh, for the homeowner, I don't, personally, I don't foresee a deal here.
Yeah.
You know, I, I sensed, looking at the drawing this way, I could tell there was a habitable third story. And then above that, you have an attic where your air handler is.
Correct.
Your addition is only two stories with a very small attic, is that correct?
Yeah, storage attic.
Correct.
And the half-story is not changing?
Correct.
Is that right?
Nothing's changing in the current system.
No. Mark, Paul, tell.
You're leaving the third, the half-story the way it is.
Correct, nothing's changing.
Mr. Adler told me it is approximately a ten-by-ten area that he uses for an office and a bathroom.
Well, I, I guess I'd kinda like to see it on the plan.
It, it's gonna have to be because you're gonna have to be, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to check the calculations before addition. I mean, there's no way it is tonight, especially because he's telling you it's not included, so. And if they're being, they're being completely honest, which is good.
I have a board member with a question. Question. On the same topic, would that, we'll call it loft area, what you would call on third floor is actually a half-story, uh, because it's not all. Where is the HVAC, the air handler? Is it above your office?
That's correct, it's above, so you walk up the stairs, there's a whole loft area, and then there's another room, uh, where my office is. And then there's also a bathroom, but on both sides of the house, there is full storage and you can, on one side, almost walk halfway around the entire house. But when you walk up the stairs in a loft area, there is a twenty by thirty-inch area where the HVAC and heating system is.
Above you?
Correct. With a pull-down stair? No stairs, just, just a half, correct.
To me, that would make that house sort of taller than thirty-five.
No.
It's existed, that's changed.
I understand that, but, okay.
Well, I'll take a measurement of the third floor area and I'll give you the accurate calculation.
Okay, so, so Mr. Lex, let me, let me just, let me, let me make sure that, um, cause I am a little confused, so, it'll be the first time. We're not seeing any floor plans for the existing half-story, I suppose, is that, is that?
That's my understanding, so you, I, I personally do not have the plans in front of me, I understand.
We do not see any reflection, nor would we know that there's even a half-story had we not had this conversation tonight.
Mr. Almedia had not had, I mean, had not asked that question, no one would know that.
Wouldn't be the first time you was pulling that media.
I'm sorry.
I screwed Paul's applicants over, I'm sorry, Paul.
Okay, so, so, um, so I guess what the board is asking is that, is that you, you come back with revised plans that reflect the, um, pre-existing half-story above the existing two stories, including what the habitable square footage is of that. And then roll that calculation into your floor area ratio number, uh, which, uh, which here is reflecting sixty, sixty point eight percent. We, we hope and trust that it's not going to make it, make, um, with the project you're presenting, uh, variance for the floor area ratio, but it's possible. I don't know, I don't know enough about how you do that calculation.
Well, we'll all find out.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, what I've recommended is that you carry this application to whatever meeting April says, will, will that be the subject?
Please, go on, April.
Can I ask you one more question before you answer that, Paul? The pavers in the front driveway, the pavers, it's, it's gonna come up for me later. The pavers in the front, exist in the front driveway and the pavers in the patio in the rear. Is the patio in the rear truly built or is it pre-existing?
It's pre-existing, we're removing part of it.
And putting, uh, removing part of it, keeping the existing pavers, but then the walkway is gonna be permanent?
Yes, that's correct, that's correct.
Uh, December nineteenth.
So, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that you carry it to December nineteenth meeting without further notice. If a new variance is discovered, obviously, they're going to have to re-notice. But if, but if you're lucky and it doesn't create a new variance, then you could just come in with the corrected plans.
Let me be clear, because we're in the board, uh, comment section of this, uh, or board question, I'm sorry, we're in the board question section of this. What's getting done here is not gonna add any, what would be called, technically called a bedroom requiring additional parking? I just wanna make sure that if parking variance is required, that we're not just overlooking that.
There's no new bedrooms being added.
Okay, and what's your current parking situation, how many cars?
Garage and one full space and then to the right, so three cars could fit.
Three.
On the rocks, to the right of the driveway, I think we're on.
Three bedrooms, two spots.
Okay, so as long as you have the two spots, the third may not be a fully integrated spot.
Yeah, I don't think it's maybe the one.
But if you're only three and two are required, you're good.
Okay.
And it's, it is, it is three, it's gonna stay three.
And that's why the third floor is not a full master or another bedroom, because it's not three.
Right, okay, so you're three now, you're staying three.
Correct.
And there's two spots, so you're, you're compliant, okay, good, okay. You all good, uh, Mr. Almachenko? Alright.
Thank you for your help.
I don't know if we need more summary there.
We should, uh, we need a motion to.
Yeah, we'll make that motion, but before I did, I just wanna make sure if there's any, if you need to recap on anything or what I just did.
I, I don't think you did, I, I think you just did.
Alright, so with that, I'd like to make a motion that we carry this application to December nineteenth.
Without further notice.
Without further notice. I'll say.
And I can be alone, Phil.
Thank you. Alright, so for the public, alright, so for the public, um, for the record, if you wanna be heard on this application, you need to be here December nineteenth at six P M. You will not receive any further notice. If you wanna be heard on the application, you need to be in this room at, at time.
Thank you, Mr. Lex, and I don't see anyone from the public except for, uh, our lovely, uh, videotape, uh, expert, Sandy. So I'll end this here. So I'll let this happen.